Public comment.
No signal.
It's like that everywhere. Yes. You can come to the comments. That's where all the places. And then it'll come up in the agenda whenever it comes up. Then we'll discuss. Yes.
But half of it on the streets now.
Wow.
I mean, last year was the same. High school auditorium. How's your job going?
It's busy, but it's good. I love the work.
Do you have your house to yourself?
Unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. So. I will call the meeting to order at six thirty three. Our first. Matter of business is public comment. I received. It's gonna make it a lot easier here if I do that. Okay. So I did receive a couple of phone calls, so I'm gonna. Play those. Now. Hi, my name is Claire Coco and I am a teacher at the high school. I'd like to read the A P E A. Statement on ballot measure two, which is put forth by the MTA. This November, we can vote for a ballot initiative that would replace the standardized MCAS test as a high school graduation requirement. And instead require students to demonstrate that they have mastered the state's education standards, skills, and competencies through their schoolwork and teacher evaluations. Massachusetts likes to brag that it has an exceptional national reputation for public education, but it's also a striking outlier. This state requires a high school graduation test for diploma, which is becoming a rarity in the U.S. Massachusetts, which administers the MCAS. Uh, MCAS test in tenth grade is joined by Florida, Louisiana, Ohio, New Jersey, and New York, Texas, Virginia, and Wyoming. The ballot measure to replace the MCAS grad requirement will not affect the continued use of MCAS as a diagnostic tool. So, um, test alone can't fully measure whether a student is ready to graduate from high school. Right now, regardless of their GPA or teacher evals, a student can be denied a diploma if they do poorly on this test. The stressful assessment doesn't accurately test students' knowledge. It only shows which students are better at taking the test. Most teachers want to replace the MCAS test as a grad requirement because it only measures a portion of what their students need to be successful. Removing this as a grad requirement will give teachers the freedom to educate the whole child and truly prepare them for success rather than teaching to the test. Voting yes won't eliminate the test, rather it will replace it as a grad requirement with other measures. Students will still take the test and their scores will be used to identify who's progressing and who needs help. Without the burden of high stakes make or break tests, our students will be better prepared to graduate and succeed after high school. Again, um, I am saying this representing the Amherst Pelham Education Association. Thank you. One more.
Hello, uh, my name is Ian Rotoal. I live on Pine Street in Amherst in District One. I work as an organizer for the Western Massachusetts Area Labor Federation, a coalition of more than sixty unions in Hampshire, Hampton, Franklin, and Berkshire Counties. Uh, we unanimously endorsed yes on two at our July delegate meeting. In addition to the Massachusetts Teachers Association, which is spearheading the campaign, other Amherst constituents that support it belong to the following unions and organizations. G O U A W twenty-three twenty-two, the graduate employee organizations, Massachusetts Nurses Association, Progressive Massachusetts, Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, and more. High stakes testing as a grad- graduation requirement is harmful in general and particularly to students of color, students with learning disabilities, ESL students, and students who are dyslexic or have an IEP. Too much focus and stress on one test is detrimental to students' learning and forces teachers to teach to the test at the expense of creating a dynamic learning environment that teaches critical thinking. I urge the school committee to vote in favor of this resolution supporting yes on question two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Those were the two voicemails I received. Uh, was there anybody in the public who would like to make public comment? Come on up. Please state your name and your affiliation and. In three minutes. We have a three minute time.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Max Page. I live on McClellan Street here in Amherst. I went to all these public schools and all three of my children went up through the public schools. And in fact, I was a member of this as the first student school committee member way back in nineteen eighty-four. So, good to be back. Um, so as I said, I'm Max Page. I'm the president of the Massachusetts Teachers Association. We represent a hundred seventeen thousand educators from pre-K through, uh, public higher education. And this is obviously our number one priority right now. This question two, we've been working on this for, as MTA, at least a decade, and people have been working on it much longer. Uh, we have gone through the process of the legislature and pushing, you know, putting forward legislation, advocating for it. The legislature has not acted, and so this past year we decided to go to the ballot on this question, gathered a hundred seventy thousand signatures, the largest anyone can remember. Um, and to bring it to the, to the people in exactly, I think, a month from, from tonight. And so I think you just heard some perfect comments about why we are doing this. The MCAS will remain. I would need to emphasize that. Um, whatever value it may have, maybe it has some diagnostic value. I, I took the California Test of Basic Skills when I was here growing up in Amherst. I assume that provided some valuable information, but was not high stakes. We're simply eliminating, replacing the focus on a high stakes MCAS. And this has been a top priority of our members, the educators, the ones you, you, uh, represent and work for. Um, this has been a top priority because not only does it deny diploma for over seven hundred students every year, who otherwise have passed all their classes and are ready for graduation. But it also narrows the curriculum. It, it adds stress and focuses unnecessarily on a limited nature, um, of test, test-taking and limited, limited number of topics. So what we think happens when we have, um, we eliminate the high stakes nature of the MCAS, we get to return to focus much more on authentic learning. So we hope that this body, which has in the past, I think, supported efforts like this too, will support, um, a resolution in favor of question two. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi. Hi, I'm Phyllis Keenan. I live on Stanley Street, uh, here in Amherst. Um, both my sons went through the Amherst Regional Middle and High School. And I will say that one of the things I want to just point out is how excellent the teachers are here and how very capable they are of teaching the students and determining who needs extra help, who needs more support, who needs more time on the material, and who is competent. And I am, as a parent, saying that was a very good experience. And when we look at these high stakes tests, let's look at an example here of English. My son took four years of English and he had four different teachers. He had to pass every semester. He wrote papers. He took tests, quizzes. He did presentations. And he passed all of that. Now, if after all of that, he had failed this one test, the MCAS, he would not have gotten a diploma. So I really see that yes on two is a way of acknowledging that our teachers here at this school have the capability and the competence to determine which students are capable of moving on to the next grade and of completing their graduation requirements. So I ask you to pass the resolution for yes on two.
Thank you. All right. Let me just make sure the timer's off. Okay, good. Okay. Chairs update. Um, so a couple of quick things. Uh, William will be attending the M A S C conference, um, so, uh, for the region. Uh, so at our next meeting, I'm, would like to put the resolutions that are up for voting on, on the, um, it will be on the agenda so we can have discussion and decide how we would like to vote on them. Pelham has, uh, will have their annual Fall Town Meeting on October fifteenth. Article four talks about the CPC money for the ninety-nine thousand dollars for the Track and Fields Project. And then the Regional School Committee was invited to attend the Financial Indicators Meeting for the Amherst Town Council. Um, I will post for the meeting. It, oh, I, I have some information and I'll forward it to all of you. Um, and I will post for a meeting, so if there's a quorum of us, we can be there and we can have discussion. And that is it. Those are all my updates. Are there any school committee announcements or subcommittee updates? Jennifer?
Um, the AFSMI contract bargaining is continuing and is going pretty well, and I hope to bring something to you to approve soon-ish. Um, it's going pretty well. I can't, I can't say about timing though. Um, also, the Fiscal Sustainability Subcommittee is having our next meeting next Monday, and sorry, two weeks from yesterday, to continue our work on discussing and researching, um, revenue, school district revenue. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other updates? Great. Okay. So next up is approval of minutes. We have three minutes in there, uh, from May fourteenth, which is the last of our old minutes that I have been able to find slash write. Uh, then we have the Four Towns Meeting and the one from last week. Uh, so, Anna?
So the oldest one, it seems like it's been copied and pasted twice. That's.
I think this was one of the ones that had some wonky things, how it was in four docs. I didn't write these. Any other updates?
I move to approve the minutes as amended. Or as edited?
I second.
Excellent. All in favor of approving the minutes from May fourteenth as amended? One, two, three.
Do we have to? Because of Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, you are here. Okay, good. All right. So. We will now go around and, sorry, Sarah. Sarah, how do you vote?
I vote yes. And I apologize for making us do this.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. Um, Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarabas? Yes. Excellent. So we are nine. Okay. Next up. Minutes from the Four Towns Meeting on September twenty-eighth. Are there any edits?
I vote to approve the minutes from the Four Towns Meeting.
Excellent. Sarah, second?
Second.
Sarah, how do you vote? Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
I abstain.
And Sarabas, yes. So passes eight in favor, zero no's, and one abstention. All right. And last but not least, the, from September twenty-fourth. Are there any edits?
I vote to approve the minutes from September forty. I move. I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Sarabas, yes. So those all approved. Thank you. Uh, the Warren Report.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
I, you're very quick. I do have some.
Excellent.
Sorry. So I, William Sher, authorized by my signature in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-one dollars and fifty-five cents dated nine eighteen two thousand twenty-four, and that was for payroll. On nine eighteen two thousand twenty-four, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature payable in these, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. It includes general fund expenses of one-fifty-three-six-forty-eight and nine cents, and then revolving fund expenses of thirteen dollars and seven cents. On nine nineteen two thousand twenty-four, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five dollars and six cents. This includes general fund expenses of one-ninety-eight, two-ninety-one, and seventy-four cents, revolving fund expenses of twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and one cent, grant fund expenses of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and then gifts for seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. I, William Sher, authorized by my signature in the amount of seven-hundred-and-nine, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and forty-seven cents dated on two twenty-two two thousand twenty-four. Sorry, that was dated on two oh-two two thousand twenty-four. And that was for payroll. And the last one. On ten-two two thousand twenty-two, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of eight-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars and fifty-three cents. Includes general fund expenses of eight-seventy-one-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty-three cents, revolving fund expenses of nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And that is all.
Thank you. All right. We did not receive any gifts. Uh, so first up is, uh, Four Towns deep brief follow-up and next steps. So we had our Four Towns Meeting. Was it only last weekend? Oh, my goodness. Um, and wanted to make sure we had a chance to, uh, you know, talk about it after. So. Do we? Can we present your? If you're asking me to? Thank you.
You want the paper? I have the PDF.
Oh, which, yeah, the, just the, oh. Oh.
I haven't plugged in yet.
Oh, okay. It was Sarah Marshall popped up here. I'm making sure it's all right. Thank you. Oh, yes. Good job. Thank you. Okay. So. Conversations. Um. Yeah. Nobody, nothing? Tillman?
I'm gonna commend the superintendent for the presentation at the Four Towns Meeting. I think it was a really, um, good, this, you know, starting point for the discussion with the towns about what the situation is and what the proposed solution could be. Um, I, I think we, the towns and the school committee have thought for many, several years about how to address the budget deficit. And it was great to see that you had proposed a solution that doesn't just cut thirty positions and say that's it. I think there's a lot of follow-up discussion around the, the combination of, you know, seven through twelve in a single building. Um, but it is, uh, you know, out of the box thinking that I think was necessary. So I, I look forward to engaging in the discussion to see if that's what we want to do going forward.
Thank you. Deb?
In addition, the idea of using the extra building to do an innovation school, I think, is brilliant and exciting. And, um, I can't wait.
Jennifer?
Um, I agree and I appreciate Dr. Z and your staff for pulling together that presentation and the, all the thinking, um, that went into the, the, the proposal that you showed us. Um, I think, I think it brought up a lot of questions for a lot of people, both the towns, the, the officials from the towns, as well as members of the public. I, I, I feel like it's a really big lift to accomplish this, whatever the plan ends up looking like for the next fiscal year. So I would love, a- and we as a, I can think I can speak for the school committee when I say we're ready to support you and support the district and what, and whatever needs to happen to make this, um, to make this feasible for the upcoming year. So, um, if we can begin to talk about what it would look like, what planning is needed, and, and all the details and logistics, um, we're ready. Thank you.
Awesome. Irv?
Yeah, I, I felt that the, um, presentation was incredibly timely. It was right on. Uh, it, um, gave us a path forward that we had not considered before. And what I wish to say is that, is that the base is the base. We do not go, we do not stray from that. Two towns came forward and said the same thing. The base is the base. This is where we stand. This is where we should plant our flag in terms of going forward with, in, in, in this current budget sea, uh, season. Anything less would be really disastrous beyond belief financially for us, and there's no reason for it. We have every reason to stay where we are in terms of what Dr. Z presented. The base is the base.
Okay. Sarah? Are you? Yes. Nope, you're good.
Yes. Yes, I add my thanks, uh, to Dr. Z for that presentation. Um, I know that Amherst officials have been hoping to see at least the suggestion of, of proposal to combine the two schools. Um, so I'm glad that, um, Dr. Z and her team are pursuing that, and yes, we will, I'm sure we will support that, uh, decision, um, even, even when we make it. But I am disconcerted that, as I recall in the presentation, even doing that. Except under the, I think the Rosiest funding scenario. Entails big deficits. So combining the schools may be necessary, but it's not going to be sufficient. So we'll have, um, really difficult choices to make, and as I recall from the Four Towns meeting in April, every, every year, there's likely to be a gap between level service and what the town's guidance stress is, so this will be an ongoing problem. And, and it's alarming to think we have to face that every year. And I look forward to, uh, the next stage of all this discussion.
Thanks, Sarah. Bridgette?
Um, yeah, I, of course, join everyone, and thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it, especially the way you just came out directly and advocated for the schools and tried to imagine how we could work within those budgets that are really, really tight. I think one thing that came up to me was how even in the best-case scenario, I think it's twenty-five positions that we're looking at cut, and in the worst-case scenario, we're looking at forty. That's a tremendous amount of cuts, and so, well, we deeply appreciate you, I really do not deeply appreciate the situation, right? It's really a hard position to be in, and I don't want us to undercut that or the, the impact that it will have, because each one of these people is connected to the children in some way and what they do, right? There are two thoughts I had just looking at the numbers, one is, um, just about the middle school building, or the buildings in general. The building costs and utilities, like, together, they near half a million, so that's a potential area for a big amount of savings, um, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can spend on the capital side, especially with the federal funds, to switch to green energies and cut down these costs as we move schools. And then the second one is a bit of a downer thought that I hope someone can turn around for me, which is, in your chart, you said fourteen percent is what we spend at the middle school, so by merging the schools, especially while we're still keeping the operating costs at the second building, it's not a dramat, it's a dramatic cut, but it's not a considerable chunk of the operating budget either, like, it just, I mean, fourteen percent isn't huge either, you know?
All right, so you're a deep reef, so go ahead.
Go ahead, you can answer.
I, I think that the initial conversations, um, around how the middle school operates and what those costs are, um, I wanna go back to the level services, level services is not going to work, and what we were doing was a semblance of it. We really need to line item budget and go through what we spend on, and every day that we shift to that, we noticed that there were misappropriations or wrong appropriations, or things were not where they need to be, and so the, the true picture of spending starts to, it's really starting to unravel, which opens up to the conversation of where, 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 where are our gaps? The middle school operating in terms of the building, there are things that the region, um, and I wanna talk about it in the next presentation, in meeting with our regional, um, I don't know what to call them, but facilitators, I don't know, at, at DESI, around our regional agreement, um, there's things around the use of the regional building that we don't even look at in terms of agreements and things like that. The property and the building belongs to the region, but it sits in Amherst, so there's a lot of things that the region pays and, and pays upfront, but there's not clear agreements in place for that, and we do, we are starting those conversations. So I think that a deeper conversation really needs to be had, not just around the cost to maintain the building or even to operate the building, but the use of the regional facilities in, in becoming an opportunity to re, to get revenue in. Um, it's not gonna be large, but it still would be enough to support the maintenance. My concern is the deferred maintenance of the middle school building. Thank you, Anna, for emailing some information, and, and the team has been looking into the, um, grant opportunities, not just for the middle school roof, but also the green, the green energy. So, you know, the team is working to, to research that and see what they can come up with to meet the deadlines, um, to work to kinda bring that up, but there's a lot of deferred maintenance on its own for that building, and so the cost of having it empty to, in that time, do some kind of capital and renovation and projects actually helps us to, to move into our programming, whether we wanna bring the building back up as another middle school, whether we wanna shift to innovation, innovative school, whatever we need to do, but we need to look at it. Also, the cost of the middle school compared to the cost of the high school, the high school actually sits as the largest, uh, personnel portion of the regional budget. The central office, because that's where all of the contracts and supports come in, like transportation and everything else, that's where the larger operational cost comes in. So when we present the, the budget, the middle school sits right in the middle in terms of operation and personnel, but if we look at the larger positions, and that includes the additional stipends, we've started conversations around how teachers receive stipends, what they receive stipends for, how is that actually calculated, the additional activities contract that's built in, so there's a lot of things within the budget that, starting this initial conversation, actually shows how we are trying to delve in to see if there are any current cost-saving measures that we can actually implement to reduce the number of cuts we may have to make.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, anything else? Sarah?
Yeah, I wonder what Dr. Z thinks the next steps might be, or do we, I forget if we have scheduled an, another Four Towns meeting, do we assume it'll be in December? And do we know what should happen between now and then?
I think the next Four Towns meeting is tentatively scheduled originally, when the schedule was made, at the end of last summer, like, December fourth, maybe, I feel like it was. I, I feel like it was, uh, early in December. So as for next steps, I think that is our good segue into our next agenda item. Uh, so. Dr. Z, take it away.
All right, and I'm gonna shift this and this. Honestly, um, the conversation, you're fine, the, uh, the conversation around the future of the region is one that, um, everyone wants to engage in, and I, um, very open to the conversation, but I need for everyone to understand that this is fluid at this point, um, because we still need to present, I do, well, present to the regional committee you, where it is that we would like to go, and my team needs to have the opportunity to delve deeper into not just, like you said, Jennifer, the logistics of what it's going to be and what it's going to take. Um, and so it's our goal to answer Sarah Marshall's question, to actually have not just the dra, first draft of the budget, but also to outline, well, it's my goal to have the team work to outline some of the logistical questions, um, timelines and things that it's going to take, so we can start to present it. The one thing I don't want is for January to hit and parents don't know where their children are going to be, and what's going to happen for the upcoming, um, school year. So in terms of our steps, in terms of future of the region, especially when we look at school year twenty-five, twenty-six, which is upcoming August, our goal is to position the region as a forward-thinking home of education, um, thinking of our resilience, the strength of the community, and more so preparing students for the future. So critical points that I'm gonna hit today, it's maximizing resources, student and family retention, um, program innovation and community partnerships. So, critical data points, I had, um, this, we've been doing some listening sessions, and in, when you listen, you hear a lot of feedback and, and concerns, like, when you listen, you hear more, you understand more than if you just continue to talk. And so, in terms of maximizing resources, I really would like the community, as well as the regional community, to know that in this planning, we did not just look at the budget. There's a lot that co, that goes into running schools, and one of it is definitely, um, the most, I guess the largest percentage of any budget is personnel, but also the most key resource to a school is personnel. And when we look at our staff retention data, at, at the end of school year twenty-two, twenty-three, the region had forty-three staff members exit. At the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, the region had twenty-nine staff members that exited, that means that we did not retain these staff members, we have an issue with our attrition rate. And thus far, for this school year, seventeen staff members have exited thus far. This is not just teaching, but this is staff positions to include facilities and transportation, um, food service. So when we're looking at the possibilities of cuts, we have to think into the fact that we also have, like I said, an attrition issue when it comes to our staff and keeping our staff, whether it's morale, what, whatever it may be, these are the resignations and retirements and individuals that have left. Out of the roles that, that we have, or the ones that have currently left, we have nine positions that are still unfilled. We are working, whether it's long-term or one-year subs, looking at interim positions to, to help, and we've been also looking at combining job duties and streamlining responsibilities. So again, when we talk about maximizing resources, it's looking at where are we and where do we need to be. One of the data points that I showed, and I don't have it here this evening, was our data, our student population is declining, um, and as we con, as it continues to decline, one of the key things that we notice is that our teaching or staff population actually increased in comparison to the, to professional staff that we had in twenty-twenty. One of the critical things that we noticed is since the pandemic, a lot of the key behaviors that increased, we used S R funds as a filler, which most districts nationwide did. They use the S R funds to create positions that we felt we needed, to fill those gaps, to pay teachers, and now, because it is the budget, it created an unrealistic and unsustainable model, where now that those positions need to go back on the budget, it's not realistic. And that's one of the gaps in terms of the positions that I think we analyzed that was created before, but more so than that, we have to look at the fact, like, are we actually retaining staff members at the region level to sustain if we have the, the model that we currently have? We also are looking at staff attendance, call, call-outs, um, the percentage of funds that we put into subs and classroom coverage. Daily, I receive, you know, we need coverage for this, we need coverage for that, and that requires an additional cost as well. So looking at, you know, our staff attendance rate also causes us issues, even when it comes to, and fa, things happen, life happens, but it also adds into what are our resources, what are we doing? The operational cost of operating two bi, two buildings at the region, both of those buildings needing maintenance, but one needing more maintenance than the other, is one that we are looking at in terms of the roofing repairs. If you walk through the middle school, I've had parents complain, I've noticed it, um, 'cause I work in the middle school building, so no one has to tell me about what's occurring in the middle school building, I see it every day, even Saturday and Sunday, when I go there, like, I see it. And so we have to maximize the current resources that we have, and when I talk about the, the buildings, we also have to look at our use of facilities, um, as I walk through my, my, um, finish my, my audit and my entry plan, it's very critical that we look at how do we use our regional facilities, what's happening, what agreements are in place with, and, and of course, it's a small town, it's a community, but at the same time, how are, how are we being held to a standard to generate revenue, and education really is not one where we're in it for the funds, but we need funds to operate. Our goal also is to make sure that we encourage families, um, to stay in the district, encourage students to stay in the district, and so what we've started looking at is that we have great resources at the district level for tier-three families, right? So we've identified these critical families that are in need. But one of the things as educators we notice is that if you have strong tier-one instruction in the classroom, if your gen, if your teacher is providing that strong initial instruction, and then the tier-two supports, there's really an opportunity to be proactive and reduce the tier-three model, right? And that's what we talk about all the time when we talk about teachers and educating, like, how do we support what happens for all students? And the same model is what we would like to apply to our family engagement, how do we support families as, at tier-one and tier-two before they become critical at tier-three? How do we intervene and provide that support? And a part of that is what we're looking at is increasing the number of families served by the family center, but not in a centralized hub, more so through school-based supports. Taking those same resources, those same individuals, and creating that direct link at the school-based levels. So now, it, it doesn't happen at the central office, the connection with the teachers, the connection with the families, the connection with the counselors does not happen at the central office, it happens at the school-based building. And creating a comprehensive family engagement model, those are all things that we have to address at the region, we have to look at our attendance, we have to look at how do we engage families at open houses, so that they can actually meet with teachers, and they can meet with staff, and that our principals and leadership steam, team engage, and, and, you know, we have wonderful educators at the region, but we need more time for families to see that and really acknowledge the great work that we're doing. And so that's gonna call for some program innovation, um, I think it was last week that we just started, um, that we met with our DESI reps around the sixth grade move and where we are with that, and also talking about the fact that, of course, they read around a consolidation of seven twelve, and what that outlines in terms of our regional agreement. In talking to them, they connected us with the Office of School redesign at DESI, so I did reach out so that we can meet with the representative there and start to have conversations, because there is actually, whether it's an innovation school, or, um, how we wanna redesign the school, like, taking the time to plan that out and map that out makes critical sense. And we have to start to address what I call the charter gaps, it's a huge gap, ninety-four students are the ones who choice out, who go to charters, and we lose two-point-three million dollars at the region. Two-point-three we pay out, if you remember our gap, two-point-three, two-point-six, so our gap, so if we start to create the programming and structures or the opportunities for such, and it's going to take us researching, finding grants, because in essence, we know we have a funding deficit, so we have to take time as a district team to map this out logistically, and make sure we have identified possible ways to bring up this. New innovative way for the schools, or to just bring, bring back what it is or what it was, I would say we need to look at what it could be and how we can improve this region, because our trajectory shows that our population is going to decline unless we do something to increase the students that are coming in. And we wanna increase our community partnerships, um, take advantage of the five college consortium, looking at how do we partner with UMass, how do we partner with Amherst College, one of the key things that, that I'm thinking of is, we actually sit within a region where we are surrounded by colleges and they are our partners. It's time to shift what that partnership looks like and start a discussion, everything doesn't have to be a partnership based on money, it can be a partnership based on programming, in-kind donation equates to money. Time is money, and so what we have to look at is, how do we create innovative programs where a student can go through our school system, graduate with probably an associate's degree from UMass, from Amherst College, from Mount Holyoke, from wherever it is, Green, I, I don't know, there's, we're surrounded by colleges, we can create that model where now we are not saying that we're creating a performing arts school, 'cause it's already P V P A, or we're not creating a Volk Tech school, but if that's what the data says, then that's what we do, because we can also have them graduate with certifications and different things, so it's really about how do we expand the region from where it currently is to where it becomes that Mecca and that model for education. That's my presentation.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you. Okay. Jennifer?
Um, just on the topic of partnering with universities, uh, there was an article in the Gazette recently about, and I'm not gonna get it right, but UMass announced a partnership with area high schools that allowed, I think allowed, high school students to take you, courses at UMass, and it listed the schools they were partnering with, and one of them was Hopkins Academy, which is the Hadley, right, and that's the Hopkins Academy, it's the Hadley Public High School. And I, I remember li, reading it, like, waiting to read that we were involved in it, which, of course, I would have known about it. Um, and I I remember li- reading it, like, waiting to read that we were involved in, which, of course, I would have known about it if we were. But anyway, that's just something to, something to put out there. I don't remember what it's called, maybe, maybe Bridget knows, but um, this is an example of a way to partner with universities that doesn't necessarily have to do with money directly.
So before I came on, I ha- I, um, I think when I was actually, I I was starting and I was scheduling my one-on-one with Bridget, I noticed that Bridget had Upper Bone. Um, and when I researched it, I said, Bridget, why isn't Amherst a part of Upper Bone? Like, that's a great program. The schools in the Virgin Islands are a part of Upper Bone. Um, why don't we have, like, Avid? Why don't we have different things? And so there were some data gaps, there were some conversations. Um, and again, this is the importance of entry and learning and and getting the full picture. And so there are gaps in our programming that don't make us competitive to other, in the eyes of children. Um, not having a R R O T C program, a G R O T C program for students who actually geared towards, like, their their minds are already set, I'm going to the military. But we d- we may not have that option here. And so we have to work on that programming, and we have to make sure that we build that into to it, to, yes, definitely.
And I can't, I can't speak specifically for the, um, the Collegiate Academy, which is the the, um, UMass statewide dual enrollment pilot. But they chose five schools in Western Mass, and they were put in touch with Amhersts. I know that happened. But in the end, Amherst wasn't chosen, we were at this transition time. But this is just a pilot, so I think that there's room for us to get involved in this.
For sure.
Thanks.
Sarah's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Um, I'm curious about the the discussions with DESI around school redesign, Dr. Z, for seven to twelve. And I wonder, I mean, and I assume that the maybe the first step of consolidating was simply to have a middle school and a high school in the same building, but still retain their independent programming. Um, maybe I'm wrong about that, maybe, or maybe that's a first step, but you are considering some more integrated seven-to-twelve program? Can you speak about that? Thank you.
Um, sure. I I'm not clear on the question, but I'm going to try. So, um, for me, the first thing is the conversation with DESI was around our regional agreements and the Amherst agreement for the sixth grade and when that would take place. And so I have to submit to them a timeline that clearly outlines what's going to happen within the region so that they can present it and move forward. I'm working on that, and that should be into them by tomorrow. Um, the next issue that you brought up, or the next comment that you asked around was the model for seven-twelve in terms of programming. One of the things that the community may not know is that currently, the middle school and the high school should already share certain teachers. Um, and so, for example, fine arts or art. Um, I can't tell you all the specific ones, but there are teachers who spend a portion of their time at the middle school and a portion of the time at the high school. Um, as well as the fact that based on graduation requirements, they would have to meet their own academic, um, to be promoted and move forward. They they have their own academic expectations. I don't want it to make it seem like it's going to be too to to administrative staff or things like, like, it it really has to be a different model because that's what it's going to be. So it would end up being one administrative staff running the entire and what that would look like. And that was presented where it would be one principal, three assistant principals. Um, and that's just one model. The model may change. And like, as we work through what it would take, and again, that was early conversation. The idea is to kind of work through in the next month and a half or so to kind of see what all we would need to do, what curricular changes would we need to to have, um, what are our projected numbers? What would the spacing need to look like? And all of that is not there, but that conversation may happen with the redesign team, but I don't think that's the focus of the redesign team. The focus of the redesign team is how do you actually take current models and make them stronger, better, um, than what they were before?
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay. Yeah, Anna?
So this might be getting into the weeds a little bit too far. But, um, we're currently, um, running a search for a middle school principal. And does that make sense if we're consolidating into one school and one principal? Or do we need to repurpose the search for a seven-to-twelve principal?
Um, I think once we have that discussion and I have full review of the committee, then I will, you know, tread differently. Um, I think until I've hashed those things out and brought it forth here and, you know, kind of have that, hey, this is what we're going to do, that will be clear. Um, but strategically, we did ask for the new individual, whoever, to have a five-twelve um, certification, just in case we had to repurpose and look between two individuals.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So just to clarify, are we going to pause the search for the middle school principal, or is it going to move forward?
It's moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Sarah, I'm sorry. I have a comment back on the four towns meeting topic that I forgot to say during that agenda item.
Okay.
We 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 sort of transitioned from that into this, and it it just happened so quickly that I didn't get to to say it. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, a comment was made during the Amherst breakout of the four towns meeting. There was a discussion of, um, some national ranking of high schools for which Amherst High School used to be in the top ten, and now we no longer are. And it was posited that perhaps the reason for the decline in our ranking is because uh, more English language learner students and low-income students have moved into our district. And I just want to say publicly that I reject that line of thinking and that our students, all of our students, including E L L students and low-income students, are assets to our district and not a problem that we need to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a bit offended by that statement. Um, but I would also say that the data has, uh, uh, consistently shows that once they have strong instruction, districts that have students who have English, districts that have English learners, I'm sorry. I am very passionate about all children, so when I hear a comment like that, that irritates me, so I'm trying to formulate my thought and my tongue is tied. Um, but I would like to say that the data shows that students who have a disability or who are English learners, once they are provided with their personalized support, actually grow faster than a stu- a student who do not, does not have a disability or is not an English learner. And so, um, they are beyond an asset. And they are also children who are entitled to a public education wherever they go. So they will always be welcomed in any district that I am in.
Excellent. Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I want to respond in case, uh, with my comments that are being, um, commented on in turn, because I did mention that the, what I thought was a change in the structure of our student body, but I was very clear at the time that I was not suggesting that that was cause and effect. I was simply pointing out that we, the district has changed over twenty years, and it's really not fair to expect that whatever whatever was the case twenty years ago would necessarily be the the case now. Many things change. And I was in no way impugning those students, um, at all. They are, of course, completely welcome and deserving of our, of our, every effort and, uh, resource we can ask. I was just, um, trying to warn against sort of head shaking about how our schools are now compared to when, when they were in the past.
Okay, thank you. Okay. M-CAS data and district designation presentation.
Do I have to present? You want me to present it? Where is it? You send it to me?
It's attached.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, Tanya and Mary Kylie will be presenting, which, they're both the same. Okay. Will be presenting, um, our twenty-twenty-four accountability um, results for the region and also talking about our designation. Um, one of the things that I think is critical, while I find my clicker, so I do not have to click for them, is the fact that, um, we need to start looking at our instruction, and I know this feeds into to what's happening at, across the the state. But let's pay very close attention to our data, and we know that our subgroups. Um, and one of the key things that I'd like to say about our subgroups is that some of our subgroups are really small, and they are so small that DESI doesn't report on that data. And so they're going to walk through, um, the M-CAS data. This is for the region. Um, and I would like to publicly start by saying, um, thank you to Mary Kylie for her years of service to the region and to the Amherst, um, Regional Public Schools, Amherst and Pelham. Mary Kylie will be retiring at the end of this month. And so since I've taken this role, and today's my hundredth day, um, yay. From day one, she has been an asset, an ally, and a good friend. And so I want to say thank you for your work and your commitment to curriculum and teaching and learning. And I am truly, truly honored to have worked alongside you, so thank you, Mary. All right, Tanya, it's yours.
Good luck after that.
Okay, so we're going to talk about accountability first, and as you may be aware, every fall, DESI publishes accountability reports on each school in each district in the Commonwealth. And these reports really have two purposes. Um, one is to provide clear and actionable data for families and communities, um, so they can judge what's going on in schools and districts. The second function of these accountability reports is, um, it's a kind of resource allocation tool for DESI. So they can make decisions about how they're going to allocate resources. And this is really linked to, in its current form, and there's been a number of different forms of these accountability reports. The current version has been for about the last six years, and it's linked to the Every Student Succeeds Act that was passed in two thousand and fifteen. Okay, so this is just a brief overview, um, of how the the system works. So you'll see when we, when we bring up the reports, there's a normative component and a criterion reference component. For district accountability, we're just concerned with the criterion reference. The district, the normative component is really applies to schools. And as you would expect, there are indicators, um, for these accountability reports, and we'll talk about what those are in a minute. And then there's a scoring rubric. That's what you see on the bottom. So there are five indicators that go into accountability. It's not just M-CAS scores. Um, the first two, achievement and student growth, those are based on M-CAS results. The fourth one down, the English language proficiency, that takes into account our access scores. Um, the high school completion, as you might expect, that's a four-year cohort graduation rate, and they also look at our dropout rate. And then there are two other indicators. One is chronic absenteeism, and the other one is the, um, the percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders who do advanced coursework. So this is required by the federal government. It's not something that's just done in Massachusetts. And, um, for the criterion reference component, we're, we're measured against ourselves, es- essentially. They look at where we are with respect to those five indicators, and then they set what they think are reasonable expectations for improvement. And it's a zero-to-four scale about how close we come to meeting what they think are reasonable expectations. That gets turned into a percentage, and then they do a weighted average. This is a really important slide. So, um, apart from that weighting process and that grading process that I just described, and we'll look at in more detail, there are, there's a requirement that all students, that ninety-five percent of students participate in M-CAS testing and access testing. And this is also required by the federal government. And if if a district does not meet that rate, not just overall, but within the designated subgroups, then you get cited, even if you have very high performance ratings in the, you know, for the five in- indicators. So, um, again, when when we show you the report, which will come up in just a second, um, when the district accountability percentiles, um, those, they they treat it like they take all our schools, so for the region, it's going to be the two, the middle school and the high school combined. Um, we're not looking at those accountability percentiles, just the criterion referenced one. And there's a separate rating for whether or not you hit that participation rate. So here's the scoring rubric. Um, and a district can be in one bucket or more than one bucket. So everybody gets rated on those first four buckets, so whether you're meeting or exceeding targets, making substantial progress, moderate progress, and so on. Um, but you can also be in another bucket requiring assistance or intervention if you either are chronically underperforming or you have that low participation rate that I just described. The other trigger for that needing focused target or targeted support is if you have a graduation rate below sixty-seven percent. Okay, so here's, here's our accountability report, the basic report. And you can see we got cited for that, in need of focused targeted support because we had low participation rates in multiple subgroups. Um, students with disabilities, our low-income learners, our Hispanic and Latino students, our English learners and former English learners, and our high-needs students. If you look down, kind of the middle of the page, the forty-three percent, we, we're in that moderate progress toward targets bucket. And that's actually a substantial improvement over twenty-twenty-three. So if you look down at the bottom, in twenty-twenty-three, when they rated us on all indicators, we got a thirty-three percent rating. This year, we actually got forty-nine percent, so that's a fifty percent increase. The overall rating is forty-three percent though, because it's a weighted average for those two years. So they wait this year sixty percent and last year forty percent. This is a really important thing to understand. DESI is very concerned with our lowest-performing learners. That would be the twenty-five percent, um, when you, when you rate students. And the reason why they calculate and and rate this student group separately is they don't want some, they don't want those learners to get lost in the mix. They don't want what might be happening with higher-achieving students to disguise the fact that some of our other learners really aren't doing, um, aren't getting what they need in our schools. And here's the, um, here are those, the point system again, zero to four, and then they convert those into percentages. Okay, so here's, um, this is all in the slideshow, as is the twenty-twenty-three breakdown in detail. There's a lot of information here, so I'll just highlight a few things. There are those five indicators on the left that we talked about that they rate us on. So achievement, growth, high school completion, progress towards English language proficiency, and those additional indicators. And, um, the first, the left-hand side of the table is the middle school. So if you look at the top, it says all students non-high school grades. They don't mean, like, students in grades three through eight. This is just the region, so that's the middle school. And then on the right-hand side, all students high school grades, that's grades nine through twelve, so that's Amherst Regional High School. And you can see, so the first two, the achievement and growth, that's M-CAS. And you can see the high school, um, did very well. And, um, you'll see that when Tanya goes over the M-CAS scores, um, uh, in in a few minutes. The middle school, not as well. And you see the same thing with the progress towards attaining English language proficiency. That's the access testing. High school was, had got three out of four points, um, and the middle school got zero out of four points. There is no rating for the, um, the high school completion for the middle school, obviously, because they're not, they're not calculating graduation rates at that. There is no rating for the high school completion for the middle school, obviously, because they're not calculating graduation rates at that point. The high school, we got dinged a little bit for our four-year cohort graduation rate, but we didn't get cited for it because it wasn't anything like 67%. And then chronic absenteeism, also, you could see worse at the middle school than at the high school. And then at the bottom, you see that 49% that we talked about a minute ago. This is, there's a lot of information on this slide, and all of this is in the slideshow, so that you can look at it at your leisure. We included a slide like this for every MCAS at every grade from seven through 12. But what we really want to just draw your attention to right now are the red box and the blue box. Those are the participation rates, and you can see the required level is 95%, and we're not hitting it. And if you look over at the state for the same subgroups, other schools and other districts are hitting at a much higher percentage, right? These are the same subgroup, so it's not the case that, oh, it's 99, 99, 98. So I think this is something we really need to pay attention to. And the other thing that I just draw your attention to briefly, that the E, M, PM, and N, M, Tanya's gonna talk about that in a minute, those are the four basic categories for MCAS scores, exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting or not meeting. So you can look at all that information.
So when you look at the MCAS four scoring categories, it's a
When you look at the four categories, you'll see we have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. It's important to note that when we go through the MCAS data, we're gonna be looking at the combination of meeting expectations and exceeding expectations, because those show that our students are making progress in terms of their academic standards. So we'll start with the region. We're gonna do the regional categories for each test, and then we'll break it down, middle school, then high school. So taking a look at the region, 712 ELA, we are at 58% for percentage points higher than we were last year. If you notice, we are that top teal-colored line. We're coming back to where we were prior to COVID. It's important to know that in 2021, as you go through all of these data slides and you're looking, that was the year that not all students took the MCAS. So those scores don't actually accurately reflect what was happening in our region. After each of these slides, I'm gonna show you breakdowns in terms of our disaggregated data when we get to our middle school, then high school. For math, as you look at the region, we're at 52%, down one percentage point from last year. It's important to notice, well, we're above state averages for both ELA and math. So as we're pushing, we're still, even as we go down a point, we are still trying to inch closer to our pre-COVID numbers. Taking a look at the region for science, we're at 57%. A great 6% growth there over the last year, and this time we exceeded our pre-COVID numbers. So what I want to do is take you through our breakdown for middle school, each subtest, and then also look at our subgroups. So first, we're looking at ELA, seven through eight. We are at 50%, no percentage gains from last year. Again, we are above the state average and trying our best to reach back closer to where we were pre-COVID. However, if you look at our disaggregated data, where we're looking at subgroups, I want you to notice that our Hispanic students and our Black students are significantly less than where our proficiencies are for our white students, our Asian students, and our multiracial and Native students. So we have an average of 50%, but Mary spoke to this earlier, and I want you to be mindful of it as we go through the data slides. We're not disguising anything. We have to be very clear where we are as a region and what work there is to do to make sure that all of our students have access to high-quality education. As we take a look at seventh grade and eighth grade math, we are at 44%, again, down one percentage point. Still higher than the state. Again, I'll draw your attention to our breakdown, and I want you to notice we have a breakdown of race, but also high needs, IEPs, EL, and low income. And in all of those subcategories, we're doing less than what we're doing as a whole. But again, we can't do anything about it if we don't take a look at it. And so here are, again, our Hispanic and Black students are lower than our other races. When we take a look at science, our science is 45%, six percentage points less than we were last year. Again, above the state, but here we're going backwards as we take a look at the data across time. Again, I want you to take a look at our disaggregated data. Taking a look there once more, we have our Hispanic and Black populations that are underperforming compared to their peers. Then we take a look at high school. Our high school is excelling in terms of our nine-through-12 ELA scores. Take a look, they're 70%, way above the state average, 9% higher than we were the year prior. Again, as we look at our data breakdown by race, even though the students are doing substantially higher than they were in middle school, they're still way below our data or the progress of their peers. Again, Hispanic students and Black students are lagging behind. Our Asian students are also lagging behind their peers in this category. As we look at math, math is at 63%. We are two percentage points lower than last year. This is the one area where we're still outpacing the state. However, when we take a look at our disaggregated data, a very different story is being told here as we look at 80% proficiency achievement around our white students, but our Black students, the lowest score there is 19%. That's not just a gap, that's a chasm. And then we're looking at our science data. Our science, and we are moving to next-gen standards for science, so this is why it looks this way. 66%, but notice a whopping 16 percentage points higher than we were last year, and again, above the state. And here again, we are looking at our data broken down, and we see that our Hispanic students and Black students are lagging behind their peers in this particular scoring as well. So there's additional resources, and I put, we put both the slide decks online for you, as well as links that you can click on to get to DESI, or you can look at other profiles of other schools in Massachusetts. But then there is a direct link to what we have here in the region. After this, you'll notice there are several slide sheets that give you full data for all of the subgroups and as well as the testing from participation. And so at this point, we'll open it up for questions, but this is for your information, and I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
So what I would like to say is when these two wonderful ladies went through the data and started to talk about the preliminary discussion around this, this isn't something that I didn't hear before coming in. I think that was one of the questions that I was asked at my interview. But what it starts to highlight is that we have strong programs, but that equity piece is really not moving through our curriculum. And so we have to stop and pull back and delve into what are we teaching? How are we teaching? What are the practices? And it may not be, and I don't want teachers to feel it's them, it's both. That's why we're talking about when we restructure or reframe the region. How do we engage families in the conversation? How do we make sure that this is a full picture? I think of children, children, when they come to high school, when they come to middle school, parents start to feel like, okay, you graduated sixth grade, you need a little bit of independence. But really, and essentially, they need to support more in middle school and high school than they do in elementary school. We also need to look at when last did we really align and look at what what are the curricular or metrics that are happening when students feed into the middle school and the high school? How do they move from one grade level to the next? And then end up in the region where now there's a higher expectation? And even at the middle school, there really isn't an expectation around promotion or retention. You come in and you do the work, or you don't do the work, you're moved forward. And so those are things that we really need to look at, because what ends up happening is that not just the instruction, the teachers can do their best that they plan to, but if the student comes with such a wide enough deficit and gap, there's not a lot that they can do to fill it, other than to support the student with some semblance of personalized instruction in high school when it's often very late. And so I know that the discussion is going to open up, and there's gonna be a lot of questions, but I really need you to understand that we are going to delve into what that curricular alignment needs to be. We're going to delve into what does it look like? And we also need to delve into how do we support our educators and support our families and support our students so that they can graduate knowing that they've gone through our educational system that's prepared them? And it's not just at the region, this conversation has to happen, but it starts with the region, because if we start with the end in mind, graduation is the goal.
First, thank you. That is a lot of information presented in a way that's actually understandable. So thank you both very much. Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you for that presentation and for the transparency. It's very much appreciated. And I look forward to hearing what the plans are once you delve into the causes of some of that, some of the discrepancies, the disparities. So since you're here and talking about MCAS, and since we have an agenda item about question two, I want to ask, what can you tell us about the number or percent of students who don't graduate due to their low MCAS score? Like, as I said, the numbers or percentages, like the demographics, like what can you tell us about that?
I actually don't know the exact numbers. It's not very high at the high school, but I can find out what those exact numbers are.
I think I want to add that I think some of them actually in high school get to retake the MCAS. So if they don't do well in the spring, then they retake it in the fall. So, but for some individuals, it's not even, and because I know the next conversation, I often think of the fact of test takers, right? There are some students who know the information really well, but the the stress and anxiety of having to sit and take a test blocks them out. And for many, that becomes very difficult to show and be as proficient as you are. So when you think about MCAS and you think about taking a test, some students do fairly well in their assignments and in any situation, but the struggle comes in with testing anxiety as well.
Sarah.
Thanks. So, two questions. One is easy, I think. In that, I just, when we look at participation rate, that is, if a participation rate is low, that's because the students in that group did not show up for the test. Is that right?
Correct.
And do we, I think I remember, maybe this was in elementary school, or I'm misremembering, that parents are allowed to keep their kids, you know, pull them out of the exams. Do we have the expectation on families and students that everyone will take it, or
I know the team and I, we had discussions around that, because I think it may have been that in Amherst, a practice from the pandemic rolled over into this year and into, like, into the last school year of testing, where during the pandemic, you had the option. We're gonna clarify with DESI around that and make sure. But really, I think during the pandemic nationwide, no one was really enforcing testing, because it was pandemic, it was virtual when we came out. But we need to make sure, because we are being held to that 95% testing participation rate. So we want to make sure we clarify that for this school year.
Children are absent from the test, can they make it up?
There's a make-up day, but just one make-up day. And I would say that this issue of lower participation rates isn't just middle school and high school, it goes all the way down to grade three. I think there has been an attitude in our district that MCAS don't really count. And that's fed into this, would be my observation, just based on years of, not just working here, but having children go through the system, three kids.
The other thing, if I may, Sarah, that, the data.
Yep, last one.
Yes?
Yes, last one.
Tanya alluded to the very stark differences in subgroups, I think, in the 10th grade half. And that is also clearly there in 7th grade. Obviously, they're not the same students, because they're taking the test all in 2024, I guess. So this is a serious problem, and I assume it's elementary schools that need to confront this and make sure that, as Dr. DESI is saying, the students that are being promoted into middle school are in fact able to do the work. Otherwise, we're setting them up for failure.
I agree. As you, as many of you know, we had data chats with the principals, the first data chats, and that was the first time I sat through and understood that schools do not retain students. They actually just move students through, whether they've mastered the standards or not. This is, honestly, this is the first district I know that report cards are only given out twice a year, and they're about 15 pages at the elementary level. And so, again, this is all going to be presented in my entry findings in ways that I think needs to change. But the elementary committees, and that's something that I will present to them, needs to start researching and developing policy around promotion and retention so that students actually feed into the region, are prepared for the rigor of what the high school teachers need them to learn, to be graduates and to go into the colleges. And so we have to understand that elementary is one thing, but when they progress into the secondary levels, they have to be prepared. And the data clearly shows that the struggle starts in 7th grade. Some students are able to recoup and to provide support and to strengthen their instructional and fill in those gaps. Others are not, and that's the individuals in the subgroups. The students who are Hispanic and our African-American students are actually struggling, and the struggle you can clearly see at the region starts from 7th and 8th grade, and the gap starts to widen as we go to high school.
Tillman.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I have a question about slide 12, which shows that table with the different number of points that the middle school and the high school have received. So it's great to see that at the high school level, there is, especially under achievement, there is good points. I am concerned, like everyone else, about disparity between different subgroups. But looking at the middle school here achieving one out of 12 points, I want to respectfully disagree with your statement that we have strong programs.
At the middle school, I didn't say. I said the high school.
So I'm looking at
No, no, no. My statement was the high school.
Anyway, that is a disaster from my perspective. I think it's terrible that we cannot achieve more points than that. And we are a pretty expensive district, and a lot of money goes into the middle school, and having this as an outcome makes it very hard to justify to the towns why we're spending so much money and not achieving the outcomes. I know that you weren't hearing the tests were taken, so it's not, I'm not saying this is your fault, but I think this is break-the-class kind of emergency. This is really a problem.
So Tillman, this is beyond a problem, this is a fire. And the reason why it's a fire, and there's, and again, there's multiple indicators that play into this. And that's why we're really going to take time to dig into the curriculum, dig into the pathway, have those conversations. Because again, the students that feed into the middle school, were they prepared for middle school? Were they ready to meet the standards? And if they were, then we also need to look at what are the gaps that occurs when they sit to take these tests? Because even if it doesn't count towards graduation requirements, it is an assessment of what our students know versus what they don't know. It's, can they achieve the standard? It it is, it's an assessment of what our students know versus what they don't know. It's is, can they achieve the standard for their grade level? And right now, what it shows is that the middle school does not. The middle school also has been through a series of turmoil, turnover. And and not a lot of structure. So, um, cultures make it quite difficult. And so we really have to look at our middle school programming. I think that, again. This number is a reflection of various factors, right? Not just our, not just our teachers, not just our curriculum, the culture, the shifts and everything else that's occurred. Were the students prepared? Like, there's a series of questions I have for this, but it it does not look good. It does not. So I acknowledge it does not look good and there's work that we need to do. Um, because by the time they reach the high school, then the high school teachers are taking time to recoup that and um. But are we preparing them for high school or are we again, you know, what are the gaps? So I'm hoping that we can answer the gaps question. We could delve deeper into those questions and I'm hoping that by next year. We can have better scores.
You mean, sorry, clarification? You mean by this coming spring or by the following?
Well, the this, the scores roll out, like the official accountability and everything rolls out. I believe it was about two, three weeks ago. So I would say by next fall, we would, we'd get an update.
Thank you.
Uh, William.
A couple of things.
I do, you're next.
Is there um data like this for preview, like last year? Cause I believe I was here last October and I don't remember.
Last year's, last, eh eh, right. Um, you you were not given a presentation.
Okay, but there is data that we could go through.
It's in the slideshow for last year.
Thank you so much. Um, is it somewhere where the it it high, I know the the differences between the um. The whites, Hispanics and and it says blacks there. Um, is, do we have data on what the state looks like for those groups?
Same slide.
Oh, it is? I didn't see.
Yeah, go back, oh.
Yeah, right there, right, that one. Because on the right-hand side, William, is the state.
But that is the amount of kids that took the tests, right?
Right, but if you look at the E, M, P, M, N, M. That's the district and then the state.
Okay, thank you.
And the average scaled score and so on.
And you have those at the very end.
Thank you.
I mean, how how do you, how how does one? I I how does one sit here or I can, I can't sit here and think. How how we failed these kids? We failed them in elementary school. We failed them in middle school because no action was taken. And then expected some kind of performance in high school. And 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 I say failure because um, these kids. Who are in school, in the elementary school, who are black and Hispanic. And they're in our classrooms. And they come out of those classrooms performing in the way they are performing in terms of MCAS. Then something has drastically gone wrong in terms of the teaching of these students, drastically. I'm I'm a former teacher, third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, middle school librarian. And also a teacher of, a founding teacher of a school in an inner city. Where kids who were uh failing, supposedly failing because of lack of intelligence. Were able to turn that around with the kind of instruction that was needed. I know, I know, there's something's wrong here, terribly wrong. And that that's affecting our Hispanic and black students, terribly wrong. And 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 it really infuriates me. That we talk about education in such a way for our kids. There's supposed to be equal access, equal ability, et cetera. But it's not happening. It it's. This does not need to be. I know that it does not need to be. And it cannot continue to happen. And and ah, and in terms of the middle school and high school, but really. What you've said, Dr. Z, in terms of what's happening down below those grades. Something terribly wrong is happening. And we need to put an incredible focus on that. It does not mean for me, because I know it does, it doesn't have to mean that, that those seventh graders coming in are lost. They are not lost. They are not academically lost. And that can be turned around, but that only can be turned around if we start focusing on it. And I'm hoping. That Dr. Z and your team and teachers in terms of curriculum reform and instructional reform. That those things happen. Because clearly, this is the most. Compelling case for change that I've ever seen.
Don't go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, Erv, I I I wanna, I would be remiss if I didn't. I said, we do have strong teachers at the elementary. I I'm just very concerned around a transition to seventh grade and then a transition to high school. And as we delve into grade by grade, we get to see that the gaps widen. The concern also is I do think that we need to identify what programs, what what instruction, what models need to be in place. So that our students, and I know we we're highlighting our Hispanic and our our African-American students are are. But all of our subgroups are suffering. If you look at our students with disabilities, our English learners. They too are not performing where they need to be. And so it is critical that we we know that all of our subgroups. Need our intervention and our support so that we can adequately provide them the educational programming that they need.
No, no, the thing is, is is to me, I strongly believe in at the elementary level. We have incredibly strong teachers, alright? Uh, and however. You can have the strongest teachers, but if you are producing students who go on to the el- to the, to the middle school. Uh, and they become underperforming, not because that they're not capable. But it's because of prior instruction. That that, that's a problem.
I suppose, like, everyone, um, you know, this is, you know, very disappointing and and really sad to see. Um, but because I'm um on the CAC committee, we took a deep dive into the twenty twenty-three data. And um, and saw that that the situation was pretty bad. Sadly, when I'm looking, it looks like this year's numbers even go down in some of the subgroups, so. Um, you know, those trend lines are also not great. I'm wondering about a few things. I'm wondering first about like putting this data from the MCAS side by side with like the. Chronic absentee da- data, the course passing rates, those types of things and trying to really identify where the weaknesses are. When you cross aggregate the data. So that would be something I'd I'd love to see. And then. Many things have been tried, right? Like this, Mary's come to us before and said, oh, we're doing this, we're doing that. What are the outcomes on those interventions? What works, what isn't working? What, have we done anything successful that we can scale up? Or do we have to go back to the drawing board altogether? Because as we're moving the middle into the high school, that's something to think about. One thing I wanna say that I noticed in my own trajectory is the way the schools also get more segregated. As you advance across the grades. And so I think there's some district models that might say. Oh, let's go to a school within a school and help these young people who are a little lost intensively. But there's others who say like, we need to be sure they're more with their peer models who are performing well. So I just think these are interesting questions to start to to percolate um when we think about. The, you know, the equity pieces, I guess. And um, you know, I'm just deeply sad listening to it. So I feel really strongly like I can't be alone on this committee and wanting to see how that data overlays and what the plan is. This is like tonight cannot be the first, the last time we need you to come back and come back and come back till we fix this.
There is significant intersection between the chronic, high rates of chronic absenteeism um and our subgroups, for sure. So there's an important link there. When students aren't in school, they're not getting the benefit of of what our teachers and our. Schools have to offer. Um, so that's something I think we definitely have to work on. We have been, um, as as this committee knows, working a lot over the, um, certainly three years I've been in the curriculum role. On um, the elementary curriculum because it really does lay the foundation for what comes after. And frankly, it was, it, eh, we we have really strong teachers, that's for sure. But what I observed was, when I came into this role, was um, really strong teachers, very experienced, very capable, smart. Devoted, all doing something different. And so students didn't get the benefit of instructional coherence. And for me, I was a math teacher at the high school, and so I would see this. And that's why I came into the curriculum role was because. I said, we need to change our elementary math curriculum. Because when when students, um, even with the the best of teachers. When when every teacher does something different and every year math is taught in a different way, kids develop gaps. And those gaps, as Dr. Z was saying, they, it's like a snowball rolling down a hill, you know, the gaps build. Um, so, um, and reading, we're working on reading now. So that's a first step, I think. That's one of our first steps. Um, and I would really stand behind that need to to continue making the elementary curriculum more coherent. So that our teachers can can make the best use of of their very strong skills with our learners. But but as you say, there are many pieces.
And I wanna add to to the conversation, Bridget, and because that's, that's the intent of the data chats. And having the schools themselves, the school leaders themselves, present the data and delve into it and have those conversations. So they can start to to see and answer questions and see what those gaps may be and delve deep deeply. But more so in terms of chronic absenteeism, one of the practices that I observed was that the absenteeism data was being. Outside of probably one school was being filtered to the schools from the family center. Like that was their role. So whereas we're talking about the real role of intervening needs to be at the school level. Cause that's where the instruction takes place. So that's the idea where we talked about looking at family retention and engagement. And having those school-based supports that were centralized at the central office through the family center. Move towards the schools, even if it's one day a week of us bringing in parents and talking and addressing those chronic absenteeism. Cause what you're going to see is within those subgroups, students who are chronically absent, not coming to school, not not inter- like. Not interacting with teachers. You'll start to see that those are the students who you're seeing are not performing as well. So we have to start to return the onus to the schools and make them accountable. For ensuring that there's a whole child method to educating our students.
Uh, Deb.
Uh, yeah, so I don't have a coherent set of questions, um, but I do have some thoughts. Um, one of them would be what, and and certainly in terms of attendance rates. What would the impact of yes on no mean for our district? Because we don't need fewer students taking these tests. And I understand the rationale behind. No high stakes testing and I hundred percent support it. I'm just wondering if. Removing that barrier means we're going to continue to have participation rate problems.
I think you're asking about yes on number two?
Yes.
Okay, so what it does is it removes it as a graduation requirement, but it doesn't remove it as an accountability requirement.
Right.
And so I think that regardless, this is gonna be the picture of our district moving forward. And if the participation rate is required, then we just have to make sure that individuals participate. It also becomes that map for how do we educate and are we educating our students accurately? And so that that's the conversation that we would have to have.
So just in a couple other quick ones, um. I wonder the im- impact of the pandemic in particular on grade seven. Because I do believe that that they were in second grade and that's the grade where you s-. Transition from learning to read to reading to learn. Is that it or is it third grade?
Third grade.
Third grade. Okay, so I I wonder if we have pandemic-related gaps to fill in.
Definitely.
Um, I appreciate uh, a- addressing all of these issues. Because we're not helping anybody by turning a blind eye to them. Um, as hard as they are to face. Also, I think you faced some pandemic-related challenges. In your previous job and been successful with that. I I did look it up. So I, that was one of the things that I was excited about when you, when you were coming to the district. And the last one, and I'm not, I'm just talking about what we say here in Amherst. Because we do have this culture of not taking the MCAS seriously. And and to Bridget's point about cross-referencing other other metrics. Because we don't weight these things heavily in our culture. And the disparate uh, achievement of different races is staggering. And but is there part of that built in? I, I mean, I I, the, what Mary said about. Coherence, a student's coherent experience through the schools, it rings true very much to me. And I appreciate that at the elementary school level, but I, and I don't wanna make excuses for us. I just wanna say that here in Amherst, we say we don't teach to the test. And perhaps we're seeing some of that comparison to state. Numbers. I, my kid never, my kids have never done practice MCAS. I'm just personally saying.
So MCAS is a set of, they they take a set, MCAS, very similar to any standardized test. Is based upon the grade level standards and proficiency. If our teachers are teaching the standards, which they are.
Okay.
Then the students would do well on the test. Because it's not about teaching to testing content. It's actually about teaching the standards, what our students are supposed to know. And that's what MCAS, that's what the ELA, the science and the math is looking at. For third grade, if a child is supposed to know how to multiply and break down numbers, then that's what they're testing. To see if that child has mastered, has they met the expectation of a standard third grader by that point of the school year. What we have to delve into is beyond just the overarching mathematics or science or ELA. Is going deeper into what are the targets, what are the domains, historically, what have we not done well at in? And I think in conversations with Mary when I first came in, one of the critical areas is writing, which is standard, I mean. Around a- across the board. And so that means that if we need to delve deeper into the types of writing and incorporating and building in. And that's why there's a new writing practice that's that's come out. So. I I always think of the fact that our standards or our curriculum is what we want our children to know. And what we want them to achieve, what we want them to be solid in. Where I would never ask a teacher to teach to the test. I would ask them to make sure that the child that's in their classroom is close enough to proficiency for their grade level. So that they have the foundation for the grade that they're going to go into. And that's what MCAS is showing us. That our students who have projected forward are not meeting the expectations of the grade level that they have been in. And the sad part is that the seventh graders that you're looking at right now are now eighth graders. Because whether or not they did, they did well, they have be- they have progressed forward without any intervention or support. Or scaffolding of learning to support them. That's my concern.
And then just the last little, little bit is, and it, I I don't know where the data is. But I've heard that the achievement gap gets wider as a result of summer at students not being. So, um, i- in terms of. At students not being, so, um, i- in terms of being able to use that time effectively to support students who need that, I, I would welcome uh, not having the problem get bigger.
In my previous district, we use our, our title three, title one, title four funding to put forth after-school programs that served for interventions for students. Um, summer programs that serve for interventions in ELA and mathematics. Um, I know there are a lot of community-based after-school programs here, but we also need to look at how do we support and provide intervention for our students who are struggling? And how do we do that in a way that, that feeds into their interest, but also, also supports them academically for their success? And so that's a lot of the conversation we have to look at, even at the region level. It can't just be about credits. It has to also be about supports.
Thank you. Anna?
So, um, obviously, the, the numbers are very disappointing. And everybody agrees. Um, what I did notice is that the gaps are not as big in the middle school. But the reason the gaps are not as big in the middle school isn't because the minorities are doing better. It's because the white kids are doing a lot worse. And so, when they get to the high school, um, either those kids were less affected by the pandemic, or they were better able to regain, um, skills once they got into a better environment. I do know that the middle school students had a couple of years of a horrible culture and a very bad learning environment. And, you know, there was just trauma for two years while the kids went through middle school. And that definitely can explain some of the poor performance on average. Um. But I do think that we have a serious problem with, uh, minority groups. And we need to take a deep dive into why they are underperforming so dramatically compared to, um, both the white population as well as sort of like the, uh, better well-off income groups. So, I think a lot of it does have to do with, um, a correlation between, um, poverty and um, some minority groups, but it's not the whole picture. And I think, um, one thing I was wondering about is the performance at the elementary schools, and if they're mirroring what we're seeing in the middle school and the high school, especially in the Amherst elementary schools. I know that in Shrewsbury, the elementary school has done really well in the last couple of years. They made some dramatic improvements. Their absentee rates went way down, their scores went way up. Um, and so I know that it's not impossible in this area to make large improvements very quickly. Um. And I think that the principals at each school really need to take ownership and make sure that their school, that they are doing everything that they can for their schools. Um, so that puts less weight on the superintendent. But, you know, yes, we need some leadership, but, you know, if the, if the school's underperforming, the principal needs to be held accountable as well. And, um, so I, I, I would be very excited to hear a little bit more, probably after you've had a little more chance to go through some of the numbers, but like, steps forward, what are we going to do to address some of these, um, deficits? How are we going to, um, what's, what's our plan for making improvements? And how do we change the culture in Amherst about not taking things seriously? Like, yes, maybe, you know, it's not a high-stakes test, but when you take a test, you do your best and you, you take it seriously. You don't just say, oh, it doesn't really matter, I don't care. And so if I get an F, I don't care. That's not a, that's not an appropriate te- attitude to teach children. And it doesn't matter whether it's a graduation requirement or just sort of like a, an assessment. If you don't do your best on a test, we don't know, we, we aren't able to use that information. It becomes dirty data. And you get, you know, garbage in, garbage out. If you get garbage into your test, then we can't appropriately plan and how to address deficits if we don't know what those deficits actually are. So, we, we need to work with the community and the, and the parents to help them you know, make their children understand, make our children understand that we, we have to do our best every day. So I don't, I don't, I don't really know how to do that, but like, it's kind of important. And, uh, it's a little disappointing to see a, a very, you know, it's a great community here. And to see these kinds of results is it's pretty disappointing.
I agree. I'm gonna let Sarah respond to our questions, and then we'll answer the rest of the question. Okay.
Um. Sarah, did you have your hand up at one point?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'll just remind everyone, we did see a plan just in May, I think April and May. Uh, Mary brought to us the, the three-year plan under the Student Opportunity Act requires. And obviously, it wasn't uh, it was designed before these particular data were available, but I think the previous year's data were similar. Um, so, so I wonder if Mary or anyone, anyone who's been there can say, if you, and if you've thought about this, does that plan that was submitted to Desi that we read and I guess approved, do you think that is still a reasonable approach to addressing some of these serious problems?
Okay. Question? Uh, Irv?
Um, I mean, there's, there's obviously a correlation between chronic absenteeism and performance in the classroom and then on, obviously on, on exams. There's, there's correlation. And, and if you look at the numbers, and, and relative to that, it's, it's pretty telling. And also, when you have numbers like that, they also tell you things that you should be doing. One of the things is that, at least from my experience, is that the most effective that the school that I was in this neighborhood was able to be effective was because we had an incredible, close contact with the parents. We did not wait for the parents to come to us. We went to the parents. First day at school, a contract was signed between us, parents and the kid. So that there was these common sets of expectations. And when those expectations weren't being met, we didn't send home a note. We said, oh, you know, no. We were there to talk to find out what was going on. You know, obviously, how can we assist? How can we be of, of help? What, what is it? But I do know there's an incredible correlation between that. And if, if you have a parent center and the parent center, uh, is waiting for, uh, you know, writing notes or calling the parents without showing up, if you show up, it makes a difference. There's a lot of data, by the way, on that, especially in the charter schools in New York City. Uh, that data where those, uh, the parent parental contact between the schools uh, paid off substantially. Uh, it's, it, it, it was like you could take those charter schools who took the same students who were failing in the public schools, brought them into the charter schools and they were successful. You look at the, what were the variables? Big one was parental contact. So, I I, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I look at these numbers, I'm really, really, really disappointed. On the other hand, when you see something like this, it, it also offers enormous opportunities. Enormous. And we just have to see these, this as an opportunity to do better.
William?
Mary, that's a question.
No, no, I, I think, um, sorry.
We're waiting for all the questions, and then we'll ask them. William?
I was just, um, I have not had time, obviously, to dig into the data, but I was curious with the looping model of the middle school, if we were able to look at like, the looped class as a two-year class and then to see how that whole group for seventh and eighth graders, cuz they looped with the same teachers, how they performed versus the next group that looped again. So it's like every other year would be
A new class.
A new class, right. Anyway. Um, and then I definitely think this highlights lack of leadership in the middle school, right? And I think educating the community on the importance of showing up to take a test is important. I know for my family, we were in New York City, and we were at a very high-performing school, and we were against tests. As a lot of us probably are. Um, so we stood up as a community. We did not ever take the state test. We never took them at our school because we were a strong enough school to where we outperformed anyway. So we were able to stand up for the lower-performing schools in a way, and kind of make it more political. So when I came here, we didn't take the MCAS because that was who we were. Um, and so I wish someone would have, like, my child did finally take them, but I do wish that someone would have explained to us, because in New York City, it did not impact our school. And our school's philosophy was, let's stand up for the, the schools who can't stand up, so we would stand up. So I think we do need to educate the community that it is important for them to show up, take the test, that it's not high stakes. You know, it, it's, it's purely looking at the data.
Bridget?
Um, I just wanted to circle back on the SOA, because, um, the SOA that was presented to us at school committee was not the final one. Um, and we sent, and last time I talked with Doug, he said that Desi had asked for many changes to it as well. So I know this committee hasn't seen the final SOA. And then on top of it, I know that some of the positions that were cut were highly, um, referred to in the copy of the SOA that, that, that came to this committee and that many people voted for. And, um, so I think, I think revisiting that or like knowing what's there and where we're going for there, that's just, if we're gonna refer to it as a point of information, I'd love to see where it is now and where, where it's going. I wanted to mention a couple of small things on attendance that I've seen that work really well. One is when every teacher in the school makes four calls a day to their classroom parents. Just, that hits everybody by, you know, certain time. Having someone go, a team of people go and do a home visit after they hit certain attendance thresholds and find out what's going on. Some problem solving, like real simple things. But then, the question I wanted to sort of spin out to is a little bit bigger, which is about this data. Like, MCAS is great for a presentation to a board like this. For people at the state level to compare districts and decide funding and stuff like that. But for an educator in the classroom, MCAS isn't a useful or authentic assessment tool, really, right? It's not good for educators or for students. We could give MAP tests and a teacher could see that afternoon, who's got gaps in what skill, what skills can I teach, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I'm just wondering what other assessment tools are regularly being used so that high-quality teaching and learning is sort of in that virtuous feedback loop, cuz that's really the biggest weakness of MCAS, I think.
Uh, Deb?
I keep trying to look for patterns in the data, and one of the things that I've noticed is the sum of E and M, and the sum of PM and NM for every subcategory is this more or less the same. Is, did, did, except for the African-American black students. So that's, that, those nineteen students stand out to me as distinctly, um, different in terms of these statistics than the other groups. Did I not explain that? I did not explain.
You did. I just, I'm waiting for you to finish.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
So we're gonna address all questions, cuz like I thought, they were gonna have a repeated theme. So the first thing, Deb, is that remember that it's percentage of each level. That what you're looking at with the EMPM is the percentage of those students. So five percent of those nineteen students, not five students, and five percent of those nineteen students are what met, um, standards. That in itself, and Mary, if, if you wanna expand, it, there is a trajectory that we're seeing, and this is seventh grade. And so, we don't disagree that there is a drastic change that happens within the subgroups. What we're saying is that the percentages, the, for example, low income isn't just African-American. Low income includes African-American, probably some of our Asians, some of our white students. Like, every, every other, a percentage of the other subgroups that are considered low income. Same thing with high needs. Um, there is a trend that we see, but we have to dig deeper. I think that answers your last part of your question, and I know I wanna rapid-fire all of these. I wanna hit the two SOA questions. Um, Mary is who gave me the SOA plan when we were submitting, um, for our funding to, to Desi, um, and so I reviewed that. But based on our current needs, the curricular audit that we're going to use, that we're going to go through, what I'm going to go through with the curricular team and all of the data that we're delving into, it will change. Um, and it mu- it has to change. Um, and so, that will definitely be something that needs to come back forth or just to review, um, prior to submission. Um, Anna, yes, there is a mindset that needs to shift. Um, and we do need to understand the fact that, um, there's a couple things about, about this, the, the town of Amherst. One, the H is the only thing that's silent, um, which is something that we should work on, because there's a level of confidentiality that people, and privacy that people need. Um, the other one is it's, Amherst is not without opinions. That's the other one I've learned. Um, but I also want us to know that the region represents not just Amherst. This is Amherst, Pelham, Leverett and Shrewsbury. And so we also, um, and in speaking today to, um, Shannon for Union twenty-eight, we're twenty-six, right, so twenty-eight, um, is that, I told her that I would like for her to join in terms of a data chat where we can look at how the students from Leverett and Shrewsbury, how are they performing when they hit the middle school? And we can look at Amherst and Pelham and see how our students are performing when they hit the middle school and start to spiral back in terms of that curricular coherence that we need to see, and that would help us feed into our SOA plan. Irv, you are correct. And that's why what we've been looking at in terms of the shifts in parental engagement and what we need to do actually has to start at the school. That's the conversation around tier one, tier two family supports before they become tier three. That's why we can't just say, oh, we have a chronic absenteeism problem. We have to be proactive and start to address that concern in terms of how are we then making those phone calls either once a week, twice a week? How are, are those happening to bring the, the children into the school systems? And that's the shifts that we are working to make. Um, and William, your question was around making sure that we educate the community. I completely agree. Um, and then you, wait, my scribble says, high stakes. So you talked, my scribble did. So at this point, it is high stakes, and I think that's a great transition into the proposed yes-on, uh, resolution. Because currently, it is high stakes. It is a graduation requirement. And that's probably why your daughter took it in high school, because she needs, she wants to graduate. Um, I think that, um, some the natural aversion that I've seen in, in, since coming here is if everyone wants to go left, we're gonna go right. Um, and so, it's often a natural instinct to kind of be against the norm, um, without proper education and understanding. So I do think that the conversation around the next, um, agenda topic is very important cuz it is high stakes, um, right now. But the conversation is whether or not the, the vote should be for it not to be high stakes. For me, I believe all data points are useful. And it helps us with our programming. But how does it impact the education of students is a different thing. And are we in, do we have the cur- the educational system in place to, to support and educate students in a way that we are not impacting their possibility of graduating? Because they've met what their teachers have put before them, but because of the system that we have created or we have continued. And I say we, I'm here now, first. But, um, you know, the system that we operate in, is it one where we are comfortable enough to say that if we vote in a different means, are we educating our sis- our students in a way to prepare them to take it? And it's not just the region, but that's the question for all committees. So I think that's a good segue into D. And if I missed any questions, you guys can email me and we will answer them later.
Okay, so, um, I put forward this, um, non-binding resolution. Oh, thank you so much, Mary and Tanya. Thank you for your presentation. And thank you, Mary.
Quickly note that we're all unhappy with the data, but it's not their fault.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sheldon.
So this non-binding resolution sponsored by myself and Bridgette. Um, you heard a lot of reasons today, um, about, uh, why people are supporting, um, question two. For me personally, it was hearing stories from educators about the impact that, the, 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 about students becoming physically ill. Headaches, stomach aches, vomiting due to the stress of taking the tests. Hearing that is what solidified for me the, the, sorry, it's late in my brain, the, the, solidified for me the fact that the test, the, you know, the MCAS is staying, but removing it as a graduation requirement is, is what we're talking about. And, and hearing about the, the physical toll that it takes on students is what solidified it for me. In addition, you know, the, um, as you heard from Max Page, the president of the MTA, the MTA has spearheaded this effort to get this on the ballot and has been strongly pushing for the yes vote. Um, and a- as you know, the MTA represent, is the parent union of our, of, of, of the APEA, our Union of Educators, Parent Educators and Clerical. But in addition, the MASCE, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees that, um, that we belong to as a regional school committee, also put out a statement endorsing yes on question two on October first, and they have a very brief statement. I'm just gonna read it really quickly. MASCE does not support the use of a high-stakes test as a requirement for a graduation diploma. We urge voters to vote yes on question two. We urge the legislature to act, to act expeditiously to rethink the entire MCAS system to create a more equitable and reasonable set of competency standards for a high school diploma. So, you know, I'm affiliated with both those organizations, the MTA and the MASCE, and I can tell you it's rare for the two organizations to agree on something. So the fact that they're both on board with yes on question two, again, further solidified my thinking on, on this ballot question. So, um, I'm gonna let Bridgette say a few words if you want to, but I urge us all to vote yes on this non-binding resolution.
Yeah. I think the reason that I wanted to co-sponsor this or that I, that I gave my support when the MTA called me, so wasn't like I thought of it all on my own, but is because when, when I'm in schools, I see how much time and energy the system itself is using to get through especially these high school MCAS with the weeks of practice tests and the research shows like sixty to a hundred and ten hours just prepping for those grad requirement tests. Then the number of hours on the test plus all the retakes for the students who don't pass again and again. Like I have students I know perfectly capable, smart children who have taken that test four times, you know, and just sitting every year and by the senior year, the stress level is to the moon. I think when we've got limited resources, where we use them, how we use them and how we put them forward is something we should really be in stra- be strategic about. Where we can let something go so we could put something better that supports high quality teaching and instruction. I think that's just something that I'm a hundred percent behind.
Questions, thoughts?
Has this been moved officially or?
No.
No. Did you have your hand up, Deb?
I just wanted to comment. Assessments interrupt learning. I mean, anybody who's been in the classroom knows that. And this is a huge interruption to an ongoing system of education, and I see no reason that we should perpetuate it now that we have the opportunity to get rid of it. That's comment one. Comment two is it's called competency determination, and I think it is a travesty to say to a student who has spent thirteen years in an educational environment that, thanks for showing up, you are incompetent. I think that's a failure. I think that is, it, it begins and ends there for me. So that's all I'm gonna say. And I fully support this and thank Bridgette and, and Jennifer for bringing it forward.
Come in.
In an environment where the schools have a lot of autonomy in deciding what and how to teach, I believe it's really important to have some sort of mechanism to ensure that a statewide standard of academic achievement is there. Otherwise, there is no external assessment that ensures that students and their schools actually achieve a common learning outcome at graduation, and we've just discussed some of the challenges of aligning the curriculum. If MCAS is not an appropriate test to assess achievement, then the test should be changed. Removing the requirement to achieve a verifiable set of standardized learning outcomes, in my opinion, is not the solution. If this gets moved, I will vote no on it.
Uh, Sarah?
Oh, so many thoughts. Um, the first is that this is a very important issue, and I'm sorry that it, it comes, it, it only comes up when we then have to vote. I mean, it, I realize we all go to the polls in a month and, and so that limits how long we can talk about it. But this is a subject that, in a perfect world, we could have started talking about some months ago, so that we could have data and not just anecdotes. Because Jennifer alluded earlier, or asked us pretty much the same question I have. I've heard that statewide, only about one percent of students do not graduate solely because of this test. Is that the case for any of our students? How many in the last ten years have been prevented from graduating only because of this test? I don't know. Is this a big problem for, for us? Maybe our students are, are, you know, almost entirely, um, leaving that, that high bar. Second of all, as I've heard, and it's assuming it's true, that only about one percent of students state, statewide do not graduate, again, because of this requirement. To throw out the whole thing seems like trying to kill a mosquito with a shotgun. I mean, it's, why can't there be a more focused solution to address those kids' needs? Why do we have to throw the whole thing out? So, um, so I am not convinced that, that this is the best way to solve a problem if we even have a problem in our school. So I'll be voting no.
Uh, William?
I, I wanted to respond to your only, um, comment. I, I think that by saying students can't graduate because of the MCAS and only because that's the only issue, I really take offense to that. There are kids that are in the system until they're twenty-three or older, you know, come to school every single day and they learn and they cannot, because of their disabilities, pass the MCAS, and so now they can't get a high school diploma. If we were to remove this, then every student would be able to get a high school diploma. Which how do we tell a student that they've been here, as Deb said, you know, all these years? And even more than the average white student that, without disabilities, because they've been here for twenty-three years possibly, and they still can't get a high school diploma? So I really take offense to the only term saying that that the MCAS is their only issue, that they don't have a diploma. I think it's a huge issue, and I think that the MCAS removing it um, would allow all students to be on equal grounds after they complete what we feel as a district is necessary for them to be a graduate.
Thank you.
Can I respond if he was addressing me specifically?
I don't know what the rules are.
You get to decide the rules, Sarah, best.
What?
You get to decide the rules.
Oh, super. Uh, we can come back to you, Sarah. Uh, Anna? And then I have Irv.
So I just wanna make sure that everybody understands one thing before we continue to debate this. Apparently the rule for the state is you have to pass the tenth grade MCAS, not the twelfth grade MCAS. And there's no twelfth grade MCAS or is there a eleventh grade MCAS?
No, what happens?
You don't stop.
No, what happens is when you do not pass it in tenth grade, you have eleventh grade to take it. If you don't pass it, you take it in twelfth grade. You take it until you pass.
Okay. But then there's like a certain number that you have to achieve that the state has set for this is what a passing grade is, and it's not meeting expectations. It's not, it's not, doesn't align with those standards. It is
The average scale score.
The aver- it's a number that the state has set, and then apparently at some point there was like some move to increase the numbers for some of the tests and people got upset about it. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what passing the MCAS really means. Because I didn't understand what it meant to start with. It's like, I don't even, what does it even mean? But yeah, and, you know, I think looking at these numbers, you know, if we have like more than fifty percent of kids not meeting expectation, like, we have more problems than using the MCAS as a graduation requirement. Like, we, we, you know, they're, they aren't meeting their grade standards, and so, um, you know, I, I think that this is a kind of a strange graduation requirement. I think that there are, I understand the, the motivation to have a statewide standard to make sure that all ki- no child left behind. All kids are getting the education that they need to be successful for the future, but, um, and, you know, I had one moment where I was thinking, like, until we have a, a better replacement, like, we can't just jettison the only thing that we have to, to do that, but I don't know if it's better to have a really inadequate measure or no measure. And I think a really inadequate measure can actually do more harm than no measure, and so um, it makes me ner- nervous to use something that is so inadequate, um, as a tool.
Um, Irv?
To, to me, it's, it, it, I would rather not, and I would definitely vote for not having the MCAS be a, something that you have to pass for graduation. But having MCAS in the state doing what it does is one way of us, districts and parents, teachers and administrators checking on ourselves to see if we're doing our jobs. The other thing that is all, has often occurred uh, throughout the history of this country in terms of education is that when there were no measurements, the least of us, i.e. minorities, low income, were the ones who suffered the most, because there was no way of being, of holding the schools accountable. There was none. So accountability goes two ways. And, 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 and if you throw it out, you throw accountability out, what you do is you leave open those ways of having students not being counted in terms of what their achievement is or is not. So we don't know, but we do know, but history is really clear. But not minority and low-income students get the short-ended stick when it comes to that. And so I would never want to throw out MCAS. But I certainly would want, do not wish to have MCAS be a graduation requirement. At, you know, it doesn't make sense. You know, uh, you know. And, and I do also do realize, really realize on a personal level, because my daughter and I argue about this all the time. She is a math educator in one of the school systems here. She believes that the MCAS is a biased instrument in a lot of different ways. Very biased. And if you do itemize and item, item kind of count in terms of questions that are asked and looked at, their cultural relevance, you can make the case for that. You know, those things are under our control in terms of getting rid of those culturally relevant items that put at a disadvantage those who are not so, uh, culturally in tune with the nuances of the language that is used in the test. That, that can be done. That I always, and I think that I am correct. My daughter thinks that I'm wrong, but I think that I am correct. You can get rid of those biases in the test. And you, all of you who support me, I will give you my daughter's email.
Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, there's no way this, dismissing the impact of the requirement on the one percent of students who don't need it. Obviously, that is, uh, has huge significance for them. I think what I said was, I meant to say that for those relatively few students, perhaps we can have other ways of demonstrating competence. But if, if, but if almost all students are able to meet this requirement, it seems like a small tweak ought to be possible instead of getting rid of the whole thing.
Uh, Jennifer?
Um, I wanted to respond to a few things I've heard. So, um, thank you, Irv, for what you said, and you're in luck because we're not throwing out the MCAS. This, this ballot question only removes it as a graduation requirement, so that's great. Um, and, and I, I, I just wanna say for this committee and for members of the public, that we're talking about like one percent of students, but like, that's not a data fact that's been checked. It's just a, a number that's been thrown out. We, I don't want us to go out, to go out and say only one percent, and, uh, when we don't know that that's the case. And I agree that even one percent is too many, students who, um, don't graduate due to the test. The, the, and it's the existence of the test that's the issue, not the percent, not, not only the percent that it impacts. Because as, as I said, like, the stress and the anxiety that goes into even taking the test, even if you do end up passing, you don't know that when you're going in to take the test and experiencing all that anxiety. Um, and as for the idea that there needs to be statewide standards, I mean, there are state standards. There are statewide standards about what a student needs in order to graduate, and removing the test doesn't remove those standards. It empowers schools and, and educators to decide and determine whether a student has met those standards in any number of ways, other than being able to get a random passing score on a standardized test. And, and I agree with Irv and his daughter about the, the, the potential for the test to be biased. And, and we even saw ourselves in the previous agenda item, the ways that the test impacts, um, peop- students of color, low-income students. So, um, yes, I'm even more feeling strongly about voting yes on this. Thank you.
Deb?
So I administered MCAS. I spent a semester working for, uh, the high school, and that was my job. So for those of you who don't know, there are three parts to it. You have to pass ELA, math, and science. So it's not just basic skills, because biology is very vocabulary-heavy. The, uh, there, there were, there was a chemistry one, that's gone. There's an engineering one. I don't know the state of that one. But I will say one young wo- woman looked at me and said, is this the ELA version? And I said, there is no ELA version. So that was four years ago now, and I still remember that. The other one, one person looked at me and said, I am not stupid, and walked out the room. So, and she wasn't. And again, that is not a message that any- And again, that is not a message that any individual should get from an institution of learning.
Bridget?
So, um, yeah, I think that um a couple of things came up that were interesting. First thing, obviously, we still have mass state curricular standards, which every educator needs to follow and meet in the course of the um thing through the school year. And every district then also has its own graduation standards of, you know, for math, for science, X number lab, science, et cetera. And students need to pass those classes to graduate. So, it's not like they, the students wouldn't have experienced a good amount of test-taking and learning to take tests, et cetera, through the experience. One thing that occurred to me is just how arbitrary the number is. In the last ten years, that number has changed, the scaling has changed over and over. So, a student who might have passed with the number the year before, this year doesn't pass. And I saw a research study that I thought was very, very interesting. It compared students who were one point away from passing with students who passed. So, let's say a four ninety-nine versus a five hundred. And the percent of those students who were one point shy, who did not graduate at all, was tremendous, because it wasn't just the X percent who didn't meet the standard, but the psychological impact of thinking, oh, I'm not gonna be a high school graduate. I might not make it. I give. So, it sets the youth on a different trajectory, I think, which is one of my concerns with it. The final thing is, it's very well documented, like there's meta-analysis on how biased the standardized tests are. And I think it's something um that really affects students of color, students with disability. It reinforces the disparities instead of opening up opportunity. And the piece that seems like really important to me is just thinking about how do we create systems where we're not reinforcing and acting as gatekeepers to keep certain groups of students down, but that the possibilities are getting to be bigger? So, those are the reasons why I am supporting it.
Jennifer?
I move that we approve the yes-on-two resolution.
Second.
Was that you, Irv?
That was me.
Okay.
I didn't call.
Okay, uh, excellent. Is there any further discussion? Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Irv?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarah? I'm, I'm sorry. Sarah, say that again?
No.
No.
No, okay, thank you. And Sarah Bass, yes. So, it passes seven to two.
Thank you all.
Point of order. Two and a half hours have elapsed.
Anyone going to make a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second that. All those infi- oh. Jennifer?
No.
Deb?
I'm not sure what we're voting.
Moving to adjourn.
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Tillman?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
William?
No.
Sarah, Sarah? And Sarah Bass, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Who said this?